The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shoot, forgot to ask. Katie, can I ask Katie Maloney to read the mission statement?
With pleasure. "We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in a diverse world."
Thank you. Next is our open forum. This is a chance for members of the community to speak before the board on any topic they would like to talk to us about. I don't have any forms filled out, but is there anyone who would like to speak before the board tonight? Seeing none, we will then move on to our call. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ron?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Blacka?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
Pepper?
Here.
Chang?
Here.
Yang?
Here.
We have seven board members in attendance. To my left is Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, also Sandy Heller, our board secretary. We're joined by two intercity student council members, the president, Lokin Cheng, who's from Preble, and Nancy Yang, who represents West High School. So feel free to ask questions and give comments and as you see appropriate. Then next, we will approve the minutes. I have minutes to approve from a regular board meeting on August 18th, special board meeting September 8th, September 15th, special board meeting closed sessions on August 18th, September 8th, and September 15th. I would entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Period 7-0. And then, we have no communications to be placed on file this month. And then, we will next go to our monitoring reports, which will be facilitated by Celestine Jeffries.
Thank you Brenda. So Mark Smith and Kim, if you could come up with Tammy Van Dyke from the Da Vinci School, and also Molly O'Neil, who's a coordinator of charter schools. We're going to talk about John Dewey Academy of Learning today, and also the Da Vinci School for Gifted Learners.
With pleasure.
Everybody come on up.
They've been trying to avoid the second row here for a little bit. Good evening. Thank you, Board Member Jeffries, for the introduction. Just for the general public, I offer a little bit of the context to this evening's presentation. You'll be hearing from two of our schools this evening and rounding out this last year's school monitoring report, so that we have gone through all of the schools, elementary, K-8, middle school, and high schools, to provide you an update relative to their school improvement efforts. The two schools that you hear from this evening, as mentioned, John Dewey Academy of Learning, a charter school, which focuses on project-based learning, and then also Leonardo Da Vinci School for Gifted Learners, which is a K-8 school. They will provide you a summary of their school improvement efforts. The organization of the presentation is broken down into three sections, a bit different than what you've seen earlier because of the uniqueness of the schools. They provided you a narrative around a summary of their school's journey. They also were able to identify the assessment of the progress relative to their action steps that they implemented this year, as well as drawing upon insights that they learned in their journey as well, so that they can account for what they learned this year and how that will impact what they're going to do moving forward into the future. As mentioned previously, the goal of the presentation is to serve as a communication tool relative to the implementation of the board's strategic roadmap. As a matter of reference, John Dewey Academy of Learning is currently in the process of completing their portion of the charter review, which will come to you at another meeting and prior to the renewal of that charter contract with our Board of Education. So you'll be hearing a lot more about John Dewey here in the near future. To hear a little bit more about each school's improvement journey, we have Molly O'Neil, who served as a lead advisor last year, teacher leader at John Dewey, and now an administrator. Also, she's representing John Dewey, and Tammy Van Dyke will speak for Da Vinci. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Molly, who can introduce who's here representing John Dewey, and then we'll allow Tammy to introduce their folks as well, and then Molly will give us a little bit of overview of John Dewey.
Okay, hello. So I'm Molly O'Neil. I'm from John Dewey Academy of Learning. I have also brought with me Lindsey Ferry, who is one of our teachers, and then our governance council president, Keal Steen, and one of our other staff members, Liz Iverson-Bird. So...
Welcome.
So to kind of give a little overview or background of John Dewey Academy, we have been a school for three years now. This is our fourth year. We do focus on project-based learning. We also focus on service learning, providing some field experience opportunities, as well as 21st century skill development. Over the years, it's been quite a process of, you know, really developing who we are, what is our vision. We've gone through some changes in administration over the years leading up to this year, as well as working on figuring out who is the right student for John Dewey Academy when it comes to PBL and really being successful in that type of rigorous environment.
PBL as referenced is project-based learning?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sorry. It's like second lingo to me.
Exactly.
Yeah. PBL is project-based learning, and JADEL is John Dewey Academy learning. So as we've grown, we've really been able to kind of reflect on what we've done over the years, what's been working, what hasn't been working, where are our students, where do they need to be, and really how can we focus on the results that we're trying to get and be a little bit more intentional with how we go about getting those results. So our two areas of focus for last year were literacy and enrichment. So I'm going to focus first on literacy, and just kind of give some background as to why we chose literacy, and what we did, and how it came, what kind of results it produced. So for literacy, what we were finding with the first two years is that our students were coming to us with, really without the skills necessary to dive into project-based learning. You know, you have to be able to read nonfiction articles and dive into that text and really evaluate what it means, be able to ask more questions with that text, be able to really figure out what is the purpose of the article, what is the author's purpose, how can I find more information. And the students were really struggling with those areas, as well as with our review of MAPS scores, which was the standardized test that we used. We were seeing that they just weren't meeting the standards necessary to be successful with earning credits and really advancing in their high school careers. So we decided that we really needed kind of a full-scale intervention for our students. So this full-scale intervention came in, it's called Achieve 3000. We refer to it as Empower, because Empower is the part of Achieve that focuses on high school students. So Achieve 3000 is the literacy program. It's an online program that we decided to incorporate into our curriculum as that full-scale intervention to really get our students the skills necessary to advance their project-based learning efforts. So with that, they were completing assignments, the goal was to complete two to three assignments a week, which all focused on nonfiction articles, as well, which was on evaluating text, argumentation, cause and effect, citing sources. All of that was incorporated into it, which is all those skills that are necessary for PBL. So with that, the students who, you know, followed that goal, we saw a 90-point increase in their Lexile scores. Overall, we had a 68% increase on STAR testing, which was one of our ways of testing their progress. So it was successful. Now with Empower, we continue to kind of evaluate, reflect and evaluate on whether that full-scale intervention needs to continue, or whether we can really start using it now as more in that RTI kind of format, so where we're really focused now on which students are going to need this to more advance their PBL. So that's kind of where we're at with that program. But in terms of improving our literacy skills for our students, it's been really successful, and we've been able to see it then through our project-based learning, credit earning, and so that's been good. The second area of focus was enrichment opportunities. For our first two years, we really focused on field experiences and community activities, and, you know, kind of like that community building stuff to really kind of get them to be inspired to do projects. And we found that that really, it wasn't producing the results that we thought it was going to produce. And so we realized we needed to be a bit more intentional with our enrichment opportunities and really look at what can we do so that it's not all about project-based learning, but that whatever we offer is still going to enrich that project-based learning experience. So really, we looked at what are our partnerships at this point, and really built those enrichment opportunities out of those partnerships. So we already had a relationship with UWGB and had future teachers coming in to observe our students. Well, it was just to observe our students, so I met with the professor and really talked about how can we make this more intentional for our students, how can this be more of like a really great partnership for both our students as well as for your students to get what it means to be in a PBL environment, as well as, you know, standing in delivery. And so we had, out of that, we had about 25 workshops from UWGB students over the year last year that ranged in a variety of topics. We had ninjas, we had introduction to music, we had nutrition, we had the anatomy, you know, it was just all over the place, which was fantastic, because for our students, if they don't already dive into those areas, they're not going to. And so it really provided that enrichment opportunity for them to explore some different avenues that they otherwise wouldn't have. We also did, I'm going to use my cheat sheet, we had two series of JADEL workshops that were presented by parents. So one of our parents, who is a psychologist, did some workshops on psychology, clinical psychology. And then we have a parent who is actually a business professor at UWGB, and he offered workshops in business. And that was really great to have them, not only did it bring in parents, but it also provided, again, this enrichment opportunity for these students that they otherwise wouldn't have had in a PBL environment. Excuse me. We also have Rocket Club. That's a great opportunity for our students to get involved in the community, because they actually compete against other schools, where they build these rockets from scratch, they make chemistry experiments, they have to go off in the rockets, and it, once again, is just another way that we're kind of building onto that PBL environment. Then we have our partnership with NWTC Artisan Center. That was a partnership we already had, but we really wanted to focus on how can we make this more enriching for PBL, and so we came up with a PBL service learning project, which was our little free libraries. We have four little free libraries all around the community, so if you ever want a book, please find it and take it from there. We also had From Pest to Pesto. So that was our partnership with Wildlife Sanctuary, where we have our students go out and pull the garlic mustard, which is an invasive species. And this past year, what we did then is we took that invasive species, and we made recipes at the new community shelter for feeding the homeless in our community. So those were just some of the enrichment opportunities. We also did a book club, which was an online blended learning component, where the students that were in that book club read several books, as well as did some online components to it, and met weekly with a teacher. So we did several things for the enrichment initiative, and it was extremely successful. Our goal was to have five, was to have every student take part in at least five of those enrichment opportunities, and we surpassed it. So that was really wonderful. Some reflections, so if I'm, just to look at kind of some insights that we've had. One of the big insights that I've had in addition to the staff, and that I think has been huge for our growth as a school, is just being really intentional with everything we do with our kids. It's really easy in a PBL environment to just kind of say, "It's student-driven. Do it." But to really kind of pull back and say, "It is student-driven, however, we're going to provide you with some really intentional opportunities for you to grow as a student, personally, professionally, academically." That's been huge for us. So continuing to provide that has been a really good insight for us, and really focusing on those results that we're looking for. Another reflection that we've had is just the importance of aligning those literacy skills with PBL. You know, not just developing them parallel to PBL development, but really bringing those together and showing them how, hey, with this project, you know how you, you know, developed how to evaluate text, this is how you do it with your project. So being a little bit more intentional with that. Another insight has been the importance of recruitment. Sorry, getting over sickness. So, you know, it's taken us a good three years to really kind of figure out, well, one, the vision of our school. We know the vision, but to really have it laid out for us and have set up what we need to do to make that vision come to life, as well as getting the students in our school that are going to really take to that vision. You know, we know now that the ideal student is one that's ready for a rigorous curriculum. They want to dive in. They're curious. They're independent learners. They're open to coaching. And they want to take the initiative in their education. And that's been really good. So we've been able to do really good recruitment for this year, which has included some really good touring times, shadow days, as well as presentations at the middle schools, which has all been really successful for us. So that's where we're at.
Great, thank you Molly. Do you want to ask questions now, or do you want to wait until?
What are we doing, separate?
Yeah, I think that's most appropriate. So questions? Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, welcome Molly. Thank you for that. Could you talk a little bit about how your students select their projects, and then what is the approval process for staff looking at the project, either saying, "Yeah, that's a great project," or "No, why didn't you pick something else?"
Well, we never say no. The process is really, it starts, you know, when the students come to us, it really starts by, it is out of their curiosities. We ask them to create a list of things that they're interested in, and then they meet with their advisor, which is a teacher in a PBL environment, and really talk about, okay, well, what about this specific thing are you interested in? What do you already know? What do you want to know? How do you think you'd go about learning those things? So that's kind of how it starts. And then it really starts formulating into, what do you need for earning credits and getting towards graduation? And so really, that advisor role is advising and empowering them to learn the things they're interested in, but figuring out how to tie them to the learning targets they have to meet. So that process then looks like, they create the project proposal, they propose it to their advisor, there's a conversation that goes back and forth, sometimes several times, sometimes just one time, depending on how really advanced they are in their PBL skills. Then it gets approved, and there's weekly meetings to kind of check in on that project process. The only time that, not a no, but a uh, is given, is really if it's not going to get them the credits that they need. If it's really, you know, if we have a student that's kind of like, "This is your 100th art project. Let's look at a science project." And really, part of that enrichment too, was filling some of those voids that they didn't want to take on, because they really want to dive into whatever it is they are super curious about, which is fantastic. However, you still got to get those credits. And so giving those opportunities so that they could still get some of those credits, but while still, you know, honoring their interests.
I've got a second question.
Yeah, sure.
I'll wait until, okay. I know as a charter school, you have more freedom of responsibility than other schools, but how do you incorporate Common Core standards into your math and English language arts?
Sure. Our math, our online math program is Common Core. Almost all of the classes are now Common Core.
Okay.
So that's how that's set up.
Okay.
Our English language arts, the program that we use is Common Core-aligned, as well as when we look at project-based learning and how to get the Common Core standards met through project-based learning, it lines up really nicely. I mean, it's pretty, it's kind of like, oh, well, this is what we've been doing. So that lines up well as well, so.
Okay. Good to hear. All right, thank you.
Other questions?
I was wondering how long a project would last for, like a typical, is it, does it vary, or is it just one entire year?
Oh, good question. So projects vary. So we'll have some students that complete a project in four weeks. And then we have some students that really want to dive in and spend a couple months on it, or a few months on it. And it depends on the credit that they're going for. So we have our credits figured out, so that it's, their projects are either going to be quarter credit, half credit, three-quarters credit, or a full credit.
Yes.
And we have it all laid out for what they need to do in order to attain those credits. And so if we have a student that's saying, "I'm going to get a half credit in four weeks," well, let's take a look at that and what that's actually going to entail, and are you going to just like put everything else aside in order to do that? Because that's not going to give you what you need either. And so it varies. But that's about how it is. And we do have it aligned with the hours that they're in a classroom, as well in a traditional setting. So, you know, we figure four weeks is going to be about that 40 hours, which is going to be about that quarter credit, which is, you know, and we kind of have it lined up like that as well, so.
I noticed that you mentioned that you were only able to present at two of the middle schools. How come? It would seem like we would want knowledge of the program to be in all of the, I mean, if it's a good program, we would want all the middle schools to hear about it. So I'm wondering what, you know, what gets in the way of that, or?
You know, now that you've just asked me, I do have to correct that. We were able to present at three of them. I left out one. So we were able to present at Aldo, Washington, and Lombardi. I think one of the reasons is that, to be completely honest, those are the schools that responded to us when we requested to come present. You know, we've always been creating that partnership with Aldo. Our students from Aldo are always highly successful, and so it was, it's a natural fit for us to go there. So, you know, to reach out to them was kind of like, well, of course you can come here. And then the other two schools, I think, were kind of like, yeah, we do have students that are interested. You know, with Lombardi, it was GT students actually that came and watched those, that presentation. And Washington gave us three days to present, and we have our biggest recruitment from Washington this year. And so it shows that it pays off to do those. And so what we're hoping to do is this year, we, the school counselor and I actually sat down in the summer and planned out when we want to do presentations, so that it hits before they register for their high school, before they hit that path and set that track up. Because that, I think, is part of it too, is that we are going in a little bit too late, so that I think the school counselors were thinking, "Well, we've already got them on track for this, maybe." That's all assumption, but those are kind of the reflections that we've had, so.
Is it the view of district-level administration that this would probably be a good thing for each middle school to at least have a, in some format, a chance to see this year?
Certainly. I think the one thing that Molly didn't mention, and certainly not intentional, but Molly also, the last couple of years that I've been working with John Dewey is, presents at our annual coursebook description meeting, so that's when all of the counselors meet together. Molly is there, I think we had, Tammy, did you do that last year? I can't remember. So some of our more unique schools had an opportunity to present at that, where all of the counselors that are sitting there and the administrators that do the master scheduling. But I think it also speaks to the more intentionality that we're really starting to see with John Dewey, the staff. My involvement over the last couple of years has really been one of more facilitating, of helping them help themselves. You've got to remember, this is a teacher-led charter school, and I think part of their growth was in really trying to figure out how to work through the district. And we have some opportunities to move forward, and I think that's a good example of that, to make sure that each of the middle schools has that same opportunity that Washington, Aldo, and Lombardi have.
Chris, and then, Chris, do you have a question?
Two, if I may.
Yes, sure.
Thank you. I liked hearing what you said about the enrichment. At the same time, I would say, trip down to Chicago and be back on the air from the city. Yeah, my first question, you alluded in your remarks to having made progress with reading. How about writing? I saw you reported that, writing, you were talking about that.
Yeah. The writing actually has improved a ton. It's interesting, because the students that we got our first year, the majority were eighth and ninth graders, and typically, that's when they're going to start really developing those writing skills. And we learned that, that just by requiring writing from them wasn't going to get them writing. And so really providing that, that intentional instruction on how do you create an essay? What is the structure of it? What does a research essay look like? How do you create an informative essay? And all of that has come through those workshops, as well as the thought questions that are in the program that we've used now with all the students. Every article has a thought question that they have to answer, which we then, as a staff, would go over and review with them, and give them the tools to make sure that those are right. And every project has to have a written component, and that means an essay. And so really helping them develop the skills through that too. So it has drastically improved. And now when we say, "All right, so what's your written component going to be?" It's not, uh, it's, "Yeah, okay, so I'm going to do this this time," which is, I think in itself is an improvement, because now they know what to do, so it's not as scary.
My second question, you don't have to respond to it now, go back to administration, or whatever. The setting at, where the attendees located, is that working out? Is it a good location? Is it a good facility still? Are there some wants and desires you have? And I ask that question because the district has been applying other settings for some of the other alternative programs. So that's.
Yeah, our first remark is that I think one of the things that we've seen in the last year and a half is that enrollment at John Dewey is continuing to expand, which is a great thing, and that the intentionality to the programming is also continuing to expand. So with that comes, are we meeting the needs of the kids that are there from a facility standpoint, from a program standpoint? So that's something that we're going to continue to evaluate. I believe that, I'm confident in saying that with the teacher leaders that are there, that this school has an opportunity to really grow, and that would be something that we would want to continue to look at, putting them in a position to grow and expand as well.
Can I piggyback?
Yeah.
What is your estimated capacity at the site you're at right now?
From a staffing standpoint or a facility standpoint?
How many students can you put into that?
In that facility.
Into where you are right now?
Mr. Stengel? I'd have to look at, I'd have to get back to you on that specifically. I know that we've looked at it. We're not at the facility capacity for what we rent out, in terms of the room that's there. There's certainly enough room. I think the one issue that we ran into last year was that we have students that are doing construction-like projects, so we need to make sure that they're doing it in the right environment, and everything is there from a venting standpoint and all of that. So that would be the one area that we'd want to look at. And the folks at the facility have been really nice to work with. They've been really supportive and helped us through that process as well. So we're fortunate with that.
Just as a follow-up, and it really goes down that road. And John Dewey is an opportunity and a customized pathway for a child and a student. And I think that, as I sit here and listen, and have thought a lot about the direction that it's going, you know, build it and they will come. I think that that's the other piece. The more people understand what it means to be in a project-based learning kind of environment. I mean, truly is reflective of what's happening out in the real world as well. And I, it's interesting, the more I walk through schools, the more I see more and more project-based learning going on. So I think that the piece, sometimes a student may come in as a freshman and not recognize that they can come, they don't have to come in between eighth and ninth grade either. Is that accurate?
Correct.
And I think that those kinds of opportunities, as we talk about customized pathways with our community, that's an important conversation as well. Because we have a lot of students who join us later, and also to see how that fits with other school things, you know. It's just, I think for an eighth grader, it might be a pretty frightening opportunity unless they have a lot of information. So I think there are ways to share that information that would bring the parents into the conversation, so that they could have clarity around it as well, not just counselors, not just students.
Right.
But I think it's a family decision, I would think, that is a very important decision, the direction a child goes. Because it really, from what I've seen, is you have a lot of parent involvement, and you need a lot of parent involvement if the student is going to be extremely successful, because it is a different way.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the improvements we've made for this year, is really making that eighth and, making an eighth and ninth grade advisory, which is a classroom, basically, of students that are with each other all day for the whole year, making it more, again, intentional, with what do we do with these new students who come to our school so that they don't feel scared about project-based learning, so that they do build those skills, and they do it piece by piece, as opposed to, "You're off and running, get going." Because that is scary. And it's really scary, because it is, it's a rigorous environment that they're not quite used to. And so being more intentional with how we set them up for success, and having parent trainings, where we bring those parents, and we just had one last week, where the majority of the parents that came were from that eighth and ninth grade advisory, because they want to know, "What's my..." because they wanna know, what's my kid doing? This is completely new. And showing them the programs that we use, the websites that we use to really track their students' learning and everything. And so, I agree, the more we can get out there in the community, and not just through school counselors, not just through, you know, administrators, but through those parents, through, you know, the students, and letting them see really what it is. And I think that's what was so beneficial last year, especially at Washington, because I brought students from John Dewey who presented, you know, they created the PowerPoint. They created the video. They created, you know, the presentation, and they answered the questions. I mean, I answered the ones they couldn't, but so what? They were listening to students who are at John Dewey, and that's really, that's huge for students to see. It's not scary, you can get there, too, so, yeah.
If I could also just add for the general public, if a student attends John Dewey, they still can participate in extracurricular activities at their designated school or attended school.
Correct.
So, we have students at John Dewey that participate on sports teams at Southwest High School or whatever high school. And then, also, there's some flexibility in them taking courses back at the traditional school as well. So, for some of the kids that maybe are a little bit, you know, hesitant and going all in, there's certainly some opportunities for those kids to stay connected back to our more comprehensive traditional high schools.
When we first set up the school or talked about, you know, what the parameters were going to be, it was determined that tenth grade would be the oldest student you accept. And are you still thinking that that's, you know, now that you've been in this for three years, is tenth grade too old, too young? Can a junior come in and succeed? Or what is your current thinking on the age, the last age that can enter John Dewey?
Sure, I think tenth grade is the ideal last age to enter John Dewey, for a few reasons. One, that's another year that they've been in the traditional setting without knowing what it means to be student-driven. So, it takes, you know, they say, the, I think the statistic is, for every month, or for every year, a child has been in a traditional setting, that takes a month of undoing. So, if our kid has been in a traditional setting for ten years, we're looking at ten months of undoing and preparing them for PBL. I think, I like to think we do it a little bit quicker. I think we're a little bit more efficient with it. However, that is the truth. Another reason is that the seniors take on a three-credit capstone project. Coming in as a junior, and even if you are up to speed on your credits, coming in as a junior, you have to then take on larger projects that is totally new to you to begin with, in order to prepare yourself for taking on a three-credit project, your senior year. And that's a requirement for graduation, there's no way around that. So, I do think that tenth grade entrance is really the grade that's best. Have we taken in juniors? A few, but tenth grade is, yeah, it would be the latest.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Chris reminded me to thank the board president for coming from the John Dewey Board. It's, I'm glad you could join us tonight. So, let's move on to the DaVinci School. Tammy?
Good evening. My name is Tammy Van Dyke. I'm the principal at Leonardo DaVinci, and I have with me Sue Seleski, who is our GT resource teacher that serves Leonardo DaVinci. She is there full-time. She plays a variety of roles, but does a great deal of professional learning and planning with the teachers. Many of you have been with us on our journey from the beginning, when we started with three classrooms and seventy-two students in Lang Lake School, and then, the following year, five classrooms and a hundred and thirty students. And then, this year, opening our door to two hundred and eighty students. And earlier, when someone asked, or Katie asked me, how's it going? And I said, well, you know, oftentimes, if you hear somebody has a hundred and fifty new students, like at a school like Preble, that might not be a big deal. But when fifty percent of your students are new, and you're in a new building, so everything is new to everyone, it's been an exciting year, but it's also been a very interesting one. And it's, when I reflected on this journey, the thing that was most meaningful to me is that it was really important that we stuck to our foundation throughout this whole journey, which was our vision, our mission, and our beliefs. And we went from a staff, the first year, five people, to this year, we have a staff of thirty people that are there either full days or part-time. And making sure that all of those people understand what it means to be a part of Leonardo DaVinci School has been huge, because it is, it does need to be different, or it's not customized education. So, that has been key, and we do that through professional learning community model. We meet frequently about students. We meet during the summer to place all of our students in academic clusters, because unlike other schools, you aren't in a certain class just because of the grade you are. We don't have all of our kindergarteners in the same math group, or all of our second graders in the math group. You are placed in a math group based on your academic level. So, that takes days of sitting down at the table and looking at all the data we have on the students. And we actually have cards for each child that list all their information. And we sit and shuffle them around, and we found that there's no technologically advanced way to do it. No card still works the best with labels. And place all these students. But it's through that process of working together as a team that we create the clusters, we create the units that we're going to do. We challenge one another's thinking, and I feel it helps us to grow as a school. So, that's one of the most important things, is for us to continue to keep that professional learning community that's focused on implementing our mission, our vision, and our beliefs. And I brought along, everybody in our school has this binder, and I'm a binder person anyhow, I like to be organized. But we bring this binder to every meeting, and we review our meeting norms, and we review our mission, and we review our vision, and we talk about our beliefs. We review the National Association of Gifted Children Standards. So, that is not just something in this binder, but it's something that we are living on a daily basis. And when we have to make a decision about how to do, deal with a challenge, we need to make sure that we're keeping ourselves grounded to those foundational beliefs, that we do what we said we were going to do for kids. Being new, it was kind of hard to pull together data, because we haven't had a consistent group of kids over time to gather data from. We really only have two years of data. But we did use growth last year as one of the things to look at, because proficiency alone, to be honest, wouldn't be a fair challenge, because many of our students do come in proficient. However, they don't always come in proficient in every subject area, and that's one of the things I noted in the report, that I might be off-the-chart smart when it comes to math, but reading could still be a struggle for me. Or writing could be a struggle for me. We find that a lot of our students may be very strong readers, but when it comes to being a strong writer, writing is more challenging for most children. So, it's important to always look at each child individually, and make sure that we're setting them up to be successful as we move forward in our school. But we looked at growth, and the target we set was our students making fifty percent or more growth according above, like the national, that is what is the national level of growth, that fifty percent or higher. And I've got, have the data in there for you to look at, that we were able to have eighty-three percent of our students do that, and eighty-four percent of our students do that in reading and math. The biggest challenge is those students who are at the ninety-ninth percentile, because they're, we have to just keep them maintaining that level of achievement and not letting them go down. And that's hard, because they're up there competing nationally with kids and staying at that ninety-ninth percentile. We've had very good attendance, that was another area that, of course, we reported out to the state, because we did have to do the alternate accountability. We didn't go through the regular accountability process because of the number of full academic-year students that we had. So, those were, so we had the proficiency as a focus area, growth as a focus area, providing the appropriate level of challenge for all of our learners, and making sure that we adhere to our mission, our vision, and our beliefs. And I reported on how we did with that. Last, just a few insights about our school. First, like I said, the growth this year has indeed, and it's been exciting. It's been a very interesting journey, but it's definitely one that we've learned a lot about how we help new students adjust, how we communicate with our families. We had to have five orientation sessions this year, because the building was, we had to kinda do it last minute, 'cause the building wasn't completely ready on time, so we had five sessions going on during the day. And then, we even had one on Labor Day, because some of our families couldn't come, because of schedules, because we felt it was so important to get our families in that building and make the kids feel comfortable with seeing where they were going to go to school, because they hadn't seen it before. So, that need to communicate is one of the things I stressed is really important with the families. We do a weekly electronic communication with our families, and that was based on feedback from them in previous years. What was the way they liked to get communication? Did they want to go to a website to find information? And the general consensus was no. They didn't take the time to do that. So, they wanted an email where everything was in the email. They opened up their email, and there was everything that they needed. We also, we have a link right in our email that goes to our webpage, and all the documents that they need are right there. We do have a few families who do not have that access to the internet, so we get those families that we sent electronically in paper form, so that they still get the same communication. So, continuing communication with our families is important, to enjoy the journey we've been on, but to make sure that we always recognize that we have to maintain that focus on who we are and what we want to be is key, as we move forward from this point down into the future.
Questions? Andrew, Mike, and Chris?
First of all, thank you for your flexible orientation schedule. My family was one of five or six that you squeezed in at the last minute on Labor Day at four o'clock. So, that was, you're certainly, I didn't know there were five of them, but certainly, that shows that you're, and it was a challenge, I think, there, at least the first day, there were still some room numbers that were taped over the door, but those aren't the important things. The building was ready, and it's beautiful. I just had a couple of, just a couple of statistical questions. Do you have, what percentage of the students there are free and reduced lunch? And what percentage are students of color?
I do have that for last year, but not for this year yet.
Okay.
But I can certainly get that for you.
Is that part of Third Friday stuff? Yeah? Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a note when we get back.
Mike?
Tammy, I know we were all excited when we were able to get that building in the downtown location, and we talked about, and would you talk a little bit about how you and staff intend to use the downtown as a resource?
I certainly can. We, Sue is actually working right now, and I can let her share about that with the Brown County Library, because we plan to be taking some trips there. And you can also talk about our whole city projects.
Yeah, great, I'd like to hear that.
So, I'm meeting with?
Come on up. We wanna have you speak into the microphone, so the folks on watching us on TV can hear you.
Oh, boy, on TV. So, introduce yourself.
She's ready for her closer. Go ahead.
I am all ready. My name is Sue Seleski, and I'm the GT resource teacher at Leonardo DaVinci School. And I'm going to be meeting with the children's librarian from the Brown County Library tomorrow. And we're going to meet together to talk about the opportunity to have our kids go to the library for a variety of things. She mentioned that our younger students would be welcome for storytime-type activities. Our older students could work with the library staff on research, and they would give them a tour and show them all the different types of things that are available. So, I'm meeting with her tomorrow. Our goal is to, we also want our kids to have library cards, so that when they go to that library, they're able to check out materials. So, when I meet with her, she's going to drop off some applications, so that we can get those visits rolling. We also have a group of students working on a simulation called Classroom City. And as part of that, we're planning to get the kids out in the month of October to visit different places in the city, hopefully to City Hall, and see some of the sites there, possibly the courthouse, and I'm not sure.
This building, you could bring them here?
Yes, we could bring them here. It's going to be a walking tour. We would like, I think there's a post office downtown, although I'm not certain if that post office is still operational, but to see the post office and, oh, the TV station. And so, there's all different places that we like to take them to, so that they can see the operation of a real city, so that they can use that in their simulation. So, those are two things we have planned right now to move out into that downtown community.
Great, that's, I think, it's wonderful for kids to get to know their community, especially the downtown, being, you know, the core of the community, so that's.
We're excited to be downtown. We really are. It provides us with a wealth of opportunities.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, two questions slash comments. Down the road, I'd like to, I appreciate hearing back on the selection process for youngsters into the program, and we're hitting the mark, just as mentioned at John Dewey Academy. Took them a couple of years to figure out, if I heard it right, figure out to get right market. And the second question is National Association for Gifted Children's Standards. Is that online someplace that you could look it up? And if you could get that to maybe Sandy or other people who are interested in it.
Sure, send us a link, that would be great.
And it may not be, I have to answer this right now, but how does that compare relative to Common Core standards? Do we have a conflict in any way that we have to be aware of or taking into account? So, I don't know whether we can follow those standards and not worry about Common Core in that pure school, or whatnot.
Sure. They aren't standards that identify what students should be learning. They're standards for programming, standards for how a program that serves gifted children should be run. For example, making sure that you are differentiating the curriculum for students and not having them learn something they already know. So, they talk about pre-testing. There are standards for professional learning. So, it's more on programming and how to run a school or program effectively for gifted learners, but it doesn't identify what they should be learning. That would be the Common Core standards, like all of our other schools. But I will send you the link, because it is, we actually use that a great deal when we put together our original plan for the school, in that making sure we were providing professional learning for our teachers, and making sure we were looking at how do gifted learners learn? What do they thrive on? And making sure we made that a part of our program. And just one side note, you know, the students are all one-to-one this year with technology, which, that in itself was also a challenge. And thank you, Diane, and your staff for helping us make that happen. But the other day, I was meeting with the staff at one of our professional learning community, PLC meetings, and I came in and I said, I walked upstairs, and today was one of those days where I went, this is exactly how it was supposed to look. They were meeting in teams of four, and they had their laptops out, and they were talking, and they had different websites up as they were looking and trying to work on the problem that they were trying to solve. And I'm like, this is the kind of learning we wanted to have happen, and to see it actually taking place. And it was only like the second week, so, yes. So, it's, if you have a chance to stop in and see, especially those sixth and seventh graders, boy, they have just jumped into it and are really, really moving.
You mentioned the difficulty of continuing to assure that your ninety-ninth percentile kids continue to stay there. Are there, and the assessments you, I mean, the assessment you use for that ninety-ninth percentile, are you, it's the STAR test? Okay. Are there other assessments that you can use, where they're not hitting the ninety-ninth percentile mark, to assure that there's, how do you assure that there's growth in that ninety-ninth percentile kid?
Well, we can look at their scale score, 'cause even though, in order to maintain that ninety-ninth percentile, their scale score has to go up, otherwise, they would fall below the other kids at the same age who are scoring at the ninety-ninth percentile. So, that STAR adjusts the scale score from fall to spring, so that there is growth. So, if they would drop below, that would show they haven't made as much growth as other students at that same level. But one of the nice things about STAR is that we can drill down and look at each of the students' tests, and you can see which standards they were at, like they're performing at the twelfth grade level in this area, and these were some of the next things they need to focus on. So, that's how we're able to use the STAR to kind of, to influence what we do with students. But another opportunity that we might want to think about is the EXPLORER. A lot of younger students now take the EXPLORER as a part of the talent search, as well as the ACT. So, that would be another way for us to have our students take those tests at a younger age, so that they don't top out.
Does the map, you don't use the MAPS testing?
Not anymore.
Wasn't that a test that was supposed to be one where you couldn't top out?
Well, the percentile that they give you is always comparing you to students, children the same age as you, but you can perform at a very high level. And you can do that with STAR, too. I mean, some of our students will look, and it'll say, you know, they're twelfth grade meeting.
So, that's, so the scale score on that is more important than that percentile?
At times.
'Cause they can be ninety-ninth percentile with random numbers, three hundred and fifty, they, and then, anything above three fifty still puts them at the ninety-ninth percentile.
Right, so we have to look at multiple measures.
And then, the other one was a comment you made on page seven about their social and emotional support. And you developed a social skills program. And I was just curious if you could give a little, you know, synopsis of what the social skills program looks like, how successful it's been, 'cause you put it in place last year?
Right. Shirley Paulson, who was the former supervisor of gifted and talented, gave us some of her merits time, and she worked with Sue, and the two of them developed the program, so I'll let Sue talk about it.
All right. We actually, Shirley and I worked together, and we used this resource, the Gifted Kids Survival Guide, and also, in combination with needs that we were seeing at our school. Survival Guide, and also in combination with needs that we were seeing at our school. And we started off with teaching the kids just what are GT characteristics and what does it mean to be GT and who are you as a gifted and talented student? And so that was of the focus of a couple of our sessions. We also did a session, it was lots of fun, teaching the kids how to introduce themselves to someone because we have lots of people coming in and out of our building and also because we're going out into the community. So it's great fun to see first graders doing handshakes and we'd walk down the hall and get the chance to do that with them. But the one that I think that was most impactful, we did one and the kids will tell you, it's on, is something a tragedy or burnt potatoes? And so we had a continuum for kids to show them the difference between something that was just really not terribly serious to something that was and to try to figure out, well, if you left your planner at home, is that a tragedy or burnt potatoes? To help them define and figure out a reaction, that would be the kind of reaction you would expect from that type of thing. And then at the very end, we had them doing some reflecting and goal setting, where did they want to be? So it was a six session, we did six sessions with the kids last year and I've been talking with our guidance counselor this year and we're looking at continuing and expanding that.
Are you familiar with Carol Dweck's mindset work at all?
Girl's mindset.
Girls' mindset, yeah. There's some very interesting information in there about some of the difficulties gifted students will have depending on how you talk to them about successes or failures. Anyway, it's a really interesting book. It's called Girls' Mindset? Yeah, it's by Carol Dweck.
We have a weekly assembly with all of our students where we focus on different topics as well that we feel are kind of good for everyone. And for this Friday, ours is the bar of learning because about this point in the school year, we always find that the students start to question if they're still smart. Because before they thought they were smart because they finished first in class and that made them smart because they finished before everyone else, not knowing that that doesn't necessarily mean you're smart or finish first. But now they're in a class where everyone else is kind of at the same level and all of a sudden they start to think, wait a minute, did something, did I change? So we talk about the bar of learning and we talk about some of the, just how you're feeling at this point in time and that that's normal and yes, you're still smart, you didn't change. We have, we do a couple of little things on the stage and they think, we do a funny, so it's a skit that's calming, but yet at the same time gets the point across too.
Any other questions, Andrew?
Do you still have TED Talk Tuesdays?
What kind of Tuesdays?
TED Talk Tuesdays. What time is it? Is it us, is it?
They do it in their base teams.
Okay, so it would be?
It depends on when their base team has content time. One team does it on Wednesday because she doesn't have any content on Tuesdays because of the schedule, but yes, otherwise it's TED Talk Tuesday and the students really do enjoy those.
How do you pick, how do you pick them?
Mrs. Gorki actually spent part of her summer researching ones that she felt were appropriate to our program and our students' age because sometimes we have to have more of a primary TED Talk and an intermediate TED Talk, but, and then she sends them out each week to the staff teams.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Thank you everyone for coming.
Thank you.
And next time, Mark?
Can please thank your staffs on our behalf for all their good work in your individual schools.
So next, next meeting that we have, I would recommend that we continue with some learning topics that will inform the future school monitoring reports. One of the things that both Celeste and Mike and I are in the process of is finalizing the plan for this year. So that would afford us a little bit of opportunity to finalize that. We have a new assessment, Smarter Balance this year, that we thought would be a good learning topic for the Board of Education, also for the community, that we could present at our next board meeting. And then other learning topics that could come forward to inform school monitoring reports would certainly be another piece that we could bring forward, so.
Awesome.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Turn it back to you.
All right, thank you, Celeste. Next we have our superintendent's update. I'll turn that over to Dr. Ryan Field.
Thank you. The month of October is right around the corner and our calendar looks very busy, so if you, if it's up there yet. We begin on October 6th and we start with a special board meeting and at that point it's the opportunity for the board to deliberate and take action on the 2014-15 budget. That's at 5:15 here in the boardroom. And then we will follow with the teaching and learning work session at 6:30 and immediately following that, the organizational support work session meeting. So three things going on, starting with the, with action on the budget followed by teaching and learning in the work session. Then on October 7th, it's a very important evening. It is the Wisconsin Association of School Board Regional Meeting at the Rock Garden and I'm sure Mr. Blackham may provide a little more insight to that and that's at 6 o'clock. Then on October 9th, we have our first of the year, the Inter-City Student Council Meeting, which is always an important meeting at 7 o'clock in the morning. I don't know why we want to get everyone up that early, but we do it every year, several times a year. And the students come and the board, so it's.
Students love 7 o'clock in the morning.
They do, they haven't heard about the circadian rhythm yet. So that's October 9th and then we've got the special board meeting. We're going to start with a retreat and it's, it's the superintendent and my retreat and we'll start that on October 13th at 5:15. But then we will stop at 6 o'clock and have the public engagement session regarding the 14-15 budget. So the budget will be presented on October 6th to the board, then we ask for public comment on October 13th to come before the board. Obviously, people can certainly provide any kind of feedback to the board prior to that, but that would be the public engagement session at 6 o'clock. And then following that, we'll reconvene the superintendent retreat immediately after the public engagement session. Then on October 20th, we have a regular board meeting at 5:30 here in the boardroom. And October 27th is another public hearing and opportunity, special board to adopt the budget and that is October 27th at 5:30 here in the boardroom. So there are a number of opportunities, the budget being introduced on the 6th, feedback for the opportunity for the public to weigh in on the 13th, more public opportunity on the October 27th and then the board will, will vote at that time and adopt. And then finally, October 31st is fall recess except for Preville. But I think they, all the feedback, he smiled, all the feedback from, from students at Preville and perhaps as part of your update, is been very favorable and I think the students are very glad to be back in school. So anyway, so that is the calendar and it's very busy. And the other piece that I have, I don't have any discussion items, but I do have a success story that I think really I want to share and it's always very heartwarming when you hear about all the wonderful things our students and our staff are doing. This one really touched my heart because I think sometimes people don't recognize the value system of the children that we serve and this was actually a letter to the editor in the Green Bay Press Gazette about the students from West High School, so I'd like to share this success story. And this was from a parent. "I attended the Green Bay West Notre Dame Academy football game hosted by Notre Dame. I am a parent of two Notre Dame Academy students. I was thoroughly impressed with the class displayed by the Green Bay West football program after watching players and coaches console the Notre Dame player who suffered an injury in the fourth quarter of the game. This reflects well the character of the program. I have watched a lot of football games and I've witnessed opposing players extend a pat on the shoulder, pat as the injured players carted off the field. What happened on Friday night was different as I have never seen players go out of their way at the conclusion of a game and line up at the home team bench to offer their handshake and best wishes for a quick recovery. I commend the staff and players of the Green Bay West football team for the display of sportsmanship and wish them the best of luck in the rest of the season. From Jerry Mullin and Alloway." So I think this just really exemplifies the character that our students have and the values that our students display, both on the field, off the field, and hopefully within the schools and in the community. So that was a good example of community readiness.
Well done.
And I have no action items.
Great.
So I'm quick.
You're done.
You are quick.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next we have a legal update. Sorry, we do not have a legal update this month.
She has one minute to say we have no update.
Yeah, I'm going to take up my whole minute. Next is our Inter-City Student Council Report. Turn that over to Lowkey.
Thank you. For high school news, Preville High School just recently went back to school on September 15th, last Monday. And from what I heard, the students really liked the new schedule of 18 minutes added on to the school day. It was better than adding two more weeks to the end of the school year. Furthermore, Preville won against West for their sports straight win last week in football at Southwest High School, September 12th. They had a rededication of their new synthetic field at the school and it was ranked by Newsweek as the 495th best school in the country out of 14,000, which is very impressive. For West High School, West girls tennis team beat Southwest for the first time in 30 years.
And then Ash Robinson.
And then for East High School, Green Bay Press Gazette had a senior spotlight to showcase outstanding seniors and East student Emmanuel Sanchez was featured. They held their third annual city stadium run and East High School student Caitlin Holzer was named a semifinalist in the National Mayor Scholarship, which is out of the, she is one of the 1.4 million juniors that made it through by taking, performing very well on the PSAT exam. And for upcoming events for Preville High School, in awareness for October National Bowling Prevention Month, we have our Anti-Bowling Run-Walk Rule 5K. It's our inaugural one. It's to create awareness surrounding bowling at our school and around the district and the country. Our homecoming is to be held on this week, on Saturday against Chaboy in North High School. And for West High School, their homecoming will be October 4th. And East High School, they will have their homecoming district against Mandeltoak, Lincoln High School. And I know it's.
All right, thank you. We'll look forward to our meeting in two weeks? Yeah, a couple of weeks. Next we have our legislative liaison report. I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thanks Brenda. First item is a school voucher update. I think everyone here knows, we are in the second year of the biennial budget, state budget, the first year of the budget. The state, there have been budget, there have been school, private and parochial vouchers in Milwaukee for 20 some years and in Racine School District for a couple of years. The biennial budget expanded vouchers statewide. The first year of the budget, there were 500 slots allowed and now this coming school year, the 2014-15 school year, there will be 1,000 slots. This summer, the Department of Public Instruction released the figures on the number of applications by participating schools. There were 31 participating private schools or school systems that are eligible when the final slots are selected randomly. There were a total of 2,834 students involved in seeking vouchers in these schools. 2,115 or 74.6% are currently attending a private or parochial school. 18.9% are currently attending a public school, 4.2% no school, and 1.8% are homeschooled and 0.4% are out of state.
Wait, could you do the, past the percentage of students who are already in private school? Could you go over those numbers again?
2,115 students out of 2,834 are currently enrolled in a parochial or a private school.
And then the other numbers?
The public school students, 18.9% or 537 students.
And then the homeschooled students?
Homeschool, 51 homeschooled students, 120 listed no school. This obviously is when the voucher program was set up, many of the voucher advocates said, well, we need an outlet for students to escape all of these terrible public schools in Wisconsin. Well, what it's turning out to, and it was the same, the first year, it was about the same amount, 75%. Most of the students receiving vouchers already attend private or parochial schools, which is setting up an entire system of support. Luther Olson, who's chair of the Senate Education Committee, has said repeatedly that we can barely support one school system, how are we going to support two school systems? And the selection will be made, I haven't seen any figures from DPI yet on the final figures on the thousand that were selected. Two of the schools, systems involved are Green Bay Area Catholic Education East with 96 applications and Notre Dame Academy with 75. Two of the systems that were in it from last year, the Green Bay Area Catholic Education South and Green Bay Area Catholic Education West did not have sufficient applications to be included in this year, although they will get the same number of slots as they did last year, but they don't, they're not included in the selection process for this year. So that is kind of an update and obviously vouchers is an issue in the governor's campaign. Governor Walker, to no surprise, has said he would like to expand vouchers. He and others have said that they wanted unlimited, no limit on vouchers, so we will be looking at that in the next state budget. The other candidate, Mary Burke, has said that she would not end the voucher programs in Milwaukee or Racine, but that she would eliminate the statewide voucher program. So that's where we are with vouchers unless anyone has any questions. State budget update. The nonpartisan Legislative Fiscal Bureau came out with a report about two weeks ago that the estimate, that estimating the state budget could be 1.76 billion in the red by And they said the main factors are new tax credits for owners of manufacturing and agricultural businesses across the board, state income tax cuts, along with a sluggish state and national economic recovery. The state, and actually the state ended the 2014 fiscal year on June 30th with a $443 million surplus, but the Legislative Fiscal Bureau is projecting that the end of the fiscal year, June 2015, that the deficit is projected to be 396 million. So there has been some talk about a special legislative budget adjustment session in January before the biennial budget talks begin for the next two years, but that hasn't been decided yet. So that is obviously not good fiscal news. Both of these are not good fiscal news for public education, so we will see where that takes us. Any questions on that? Chris?
Comment if it may, I just can't let it pass. With vouchers, we have many concerns with vouchers.
Oh, sure.
We have many concerns with vouchers. One that continually comes home to me is the lack of transparency. We're sitting right here as a public body discussing the public business with our schools in front of God and country. We're on TV, we make sure of that. We have reports in the paper about what we do. We're not secretive, okay? And that transparency is a very, very important point if you want a democracy. Now, people in the Green Bay area, I think, that should come home to them if they think about, about two things that happened, one most recently and one some time ago, namely some time ago, Premontry, St. Joseph's Academy and Abbott Pennings, two of the three were closed down, one of them was made into Notre Dame. That was not. That was not discussed or vetted publicly. That was done behind closed doors, okay? And that's, that's the way, you know, so yeah, that's the way private and parochial schools operate. Most recently in our community, there was no transparency at all with the International School. And people out there that worried about why, uh, think about why we're concerned about transparency, well, that's a very good example. That place all of a sudden closed up. The decision was made behind closed doors. Uh, folks lost money, uh, had to scramble for a new school for their, their children, uh, or child. And, uh, staff, uh, weren't being paid and, and whatnot. So when we talk about lack of transparency, those are two real life issues right in the Green Bay area. And I, I just had to share that.
Yeah. Thank you, Chris. Andrew, do you have something?
How many, how many students in the last round actually left, actually left the Green Bay public schools for a voucher school?
In, in the Green Bay area, there were three public school students, and I don't even think if we know if they were ours. It was the Green Bay area, so they could be include any of our suburbs.
Yeah, I believe we know of one.
One.
I mean, I, that I know of one, and I don't know that I ever heard of any others.
Okay. But there were three in the Green Bay area of that.
So there'd be three that applied to the places that listed Green Bay?
Right.
Theoretically, uh, maybe a Green Bay student could have applied to some far-flung one, and we would never really know. But, so for the whole...
But that, they're actually attending. That's my understanding, that there was a student from one of our high schools that is attending.
No, one. So, so that's probably, it would be, it would be reasonable to say that whatever perception might exist among some folks about a mad scramble to run from public education, apparently that did not occur in, in Green Bay because somewhere between one and three, not percent, one, two, or three students maybe left. Maybe just one.
And, and I guess, you know, that may feed some people saying, "Well, then what are you worried about if you're not losing students?" I think the, the overriding, well, I, I think that's a constitutional question too. But I think the overriding concern is, is that should taxpayers fund private and religious education? Public education is required in the Wisconsin Constitution. Private religious schools are not. Now, private religious schools, they certainly have a place in our community. There are some good private religious schools in this community. And I don't think anyone has ever said at this table that they're not good schools. It's just that should we fund them with public taxpayer dollars? And I think no. Michelle, would you go over?
I, I just, I, the, I think that's something that we have to keep a very close watch on is the funding. And if we're funding multiple systems, the great concern and the recognition, as we saw with the referendum, is that the, the revenues that come to the Green Bay area public school students are below the state average to begin with. And the only, we can raise that revenue cap by going to referendum. But that's the piece, as we look as, as a, as a school to balance a budget, we're now getting to the point where we're making some tough choices because of the funding formula. And because of, as we start to divert funds away from our students, we get a very different, um, budget to deal with. So we, we could do a, a good job for a while and a half, but it will get to the point, depending upon how the legislature, uh, makes some decisions around education that could have extreme, extreme impact on the public good for our community and into the future. And that's the piece that we have to keep our eye on is really the finance piece at the end of the day. Um, because we need to be able to provide accessible, quality education, and that's our commitment to our community, so.
All right, thank you. Um, the next item, a couple of the WSB events, uh, the regional meeting, which, uh, Michelle mentioned before, uh, is October seventh at, at six o'clock. Um, there is an election. Um, I am running for reelection, another three-year term. Uh, there have been no other candidates that have filed by the required deadline. So, uh, there will be an election, but I am not opposed.
Oh, good.
That means you're either really good or no one wants that.
Well, that's good.
It makes it easier to keep your presidency of WSB too.
That's right.
Because it's too tough.
Uh, the main, the, the main presentation is on Excellence in the Classroom Begins with Excellence in the Boardroom. And it, uh, it's a, it's a program on, uh, effective school boards. So that's one of the things on the agenda. And, uh, let Sandy know if you would, uh, like to attend. Uh, the second one is, um, the WSB Legislative Advocacy Conference, which is, uh, November eighth at the Holiday Inn Conference Center in Stevens Point. Uh, and you should have all gotten, um, a brochure in the mail from WSB. But there really are, um, some excellent presentations. Uh, the first one is on private vouchers, independent charters, and the public school advantage. Uh, Dr. Julie Mead, uh, the Educational Leadership Professor at UW Madison. Uh, the next one, um, is on a closer look at the history and purpose of the Common Core State Standards and the role of school boards regarding academic standards, curriculum, and instruction. Uh, another one, key trends and conditions that will impact state support for public education in the short and long range. Um, the two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen, uh, state budget, preparing for your advocacy role. And then finally, uh, what school board members need to know about school report cards and accountability. Uh, so that is in November. And again, uh, you can let, uh, Sandy know if you'd like to attend. It's a one-day conference, and she can register. Uh, finally, there's a couple of things, um, on the federal level. Um, the National School Board Association is working with Senator Tom Harkin and others to introduce a bill, uh, that over a ten-year period is called the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, that over a ten-year period would es, would establish full funding of the federal share of costs for special education. Uh, when IDEA was, uh, set up, the federal government promised forty percent federal funding. It is now at sixteen percent. So, um, WSB is working with some key legislators on that. And then also last week, on a vote of three hundred and nineteen to a hundred and six, uh, the House of Representatives passed, uh, stopgap legislation to fund education of other federal programs through December eleventh, two thousand fourteen, in lieu of a full-year appropriations bill for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, which begins October first. So they had to have the short-term continuing resolution. Uh, that was also passed by the Senate, seventy-eight to twenty-two. Uh, so that gives the legislature some time to, um, develop, um, full legislation for the full fiscal year. So, um, unless anyone has any questions.
I, I, I appreciate your, your, uh, comment about they now have time to put a budget together. Excuse me, they're taking a five-week vacation right now.
To campaign.
And, you know, something's wrong with this picture. They're getting paid good money, and you represented us. I, I...
Well, yes, you're right. And you look at all the other legislation that's hanging, whether it's immigration legislation or lots of other things, so. All right, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mike. Next is the district events. A chance for anybody to announce events that are coming up? Anything? All right, we will move on to system reports. First, we have our teaching and learning report, which will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have no action items tonight. Last week, we had an excellent discussion, uh, presentation by the Tech, Diane Dorsh and the technology team. And we heard evidence tonight, uh, Tammy Van Dyke's day was made when she glanced in a classroom and saw groups of four students working on their laptops. Our technology, the development ex, expansion of the program to enhance student learning and professional development is on course. And that concludes my report.
All right, you did it in your allotted minutes.
Less than my allotted minute, but that's okay. Thank you.
Next we have our organizational support work session, or report, and that'll be facilitated by Andy Becker.
Okay, uh, we have one action item under Business and Finance. I move that the computer leasing agreement with Providence Capital Network, as presented, be approved.
Second.
And again, we have been using Providence to do leasing on our computers. Uh, we're, we're doing a three-year lease, so we're paying the, uh, the two point one million dollars of computers that were recently purchased, um, paying, paying the, the two point one million back over a three-year period. And by leasing the computers, uh, we would save a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, uh, on the purchase of the computers because we are leasing them.
We're, we're saving that money this one year, right?
Correct.
How are you looking at it?
Yeah. Our strategy at this point is to, we're looking at leasing, I think, every year in the future. And, and leasing it on a three-year, so it will continue to roll over. Um, you know, and we will be, you know, that is the, the strategy that we're using. Now, at the end of the lease, the, the, uh, the company has the ability to come and they will take the computers, and they will go back, and they will sell them. And that is, and, and their, um, strategy is that they believe that they will be able to sell those computers for more than the hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars we're saving on the price. Rather than us trying to, uh, erase all of the computers, the company themselves will erase all the information on there and sell the computers versus us trying to sell them. It, it, you know, we don't have nearly the contacts that a company like this has in the United States and overseas.
They guarantee us that they erase everything?
Correct.
Okay. That's important.
And this would be, uh, the fourth time that we have used the same company, so.
All right.
We have used them since, uh, for the last five years.
Any other questions? All right, Sandy?
Malone?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
Under Human Resources, uh, action items. Uh, first, I move that the transfer of Michael Stengel, Director of Facilities Planning and Related Services, to Executive Director of Facilities and Related Services, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any questions? Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mike.
Mike's taking his stride back there. For the next two, I'd just like to ask Dave Farzad to come forward.
I move that a one point zero percent base wage increase for all steps for educators, both on and off the schedule, retroactive to July first, two thousand fourteen, as presented, be approved.
Second.
I think that, um, you know, as always, we hope that we would be able to provide a larger increase. But I think it's important to note that this is the second year now that we've had an increase for educators. And, um, again, as we did last year, the educators who are off the schedule will receive, uh, the same increase. And that keeps some internal equity, which we think is important.
Uh, the comment that I have, uh, is to say thank you. And I say thank you because this organization, uh, treats its staff's representatives as equals. There are many school districts in this state where that's just simply not true. So we appreciate, uh, good faith bargaining. We appreciate being able to sit down and talk about these issues. And even though there are people in, uh, Madison who believe that, uh, these two organizations should not be able to do that, uh, we approve otherwise. And, uh, I think we've worked together on this. We work together on many things, and, uh, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Dave. Anything else anybody wants to say? Go ahead. Oh, Chris?
Yes, I, I appreciate your comments. You know, and, and it takes two to tango, so, uh, thank you and you're in.
I don't dance with you on those. I move back and forth.
And definitely not tango, right?
That's right.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Epstein.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Carried six, uh, ayes to one, with one abstention.
Right, I move that the changes to the educator's salary schedule and the opening of the master's lane, as presented, be approved.
Second.
I would like to make, um, a comment, if you would. Uh, I think that this change represents, um, both the district's and the GBA's mutual interest in opening up the master's lane and recognizing that a master's degree, uh, that educators achieve is a, is a big achievement and should be recognized with additional compensation. The other change that, um, you've known, you, you'll note is that the shaded area that was once present is now removed. And that means that all of the educators on this scale can move through the scale, um, as, as we feel that they should. And it, there is no, um, disincentive if you wish to stay on, on the scale. And the, um, the scale as, as it was conceived still remains intact, but those are two major changes. So I, I, I do think that this is a very important, um, time for us to, to do that. And I, and then if the board supports this, the GBA, um, with the district will work on implementing the changes and get out a, a communication to all the educators who've achieved their masters over the last, um, couple of years since two thousand and eleven. And we would recognize that by moving them to the master's lane and make it retroactive to the beginning of the school year. So that would be part of the understanding.
Brenda? Actually, it's your meeting, I just want to make a...
Yeah, yeah, anyway, we always get confused at this point in the meeting, whose calls on who. Um, I'm looking at the teacher's salary schedule. That was the attachment for this part. And, and, um, we're not moving people into the bachelor plus fifteen, those are people that are already there. So the only movement would be from wherever they are into that master's lane.
That is correct.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you. The only question I have is that both of these day, when is, when does your membership vote on this?
Uh, September thirtieth.
September thirtieth?
Correct, and they vote on the, uh, the base wage agreement.
Yeah, right, okay. Thank you.
This, this, um, these changes were done through our meeting confer process.
All right, Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Epstein.
Wagner?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried six ayes to, with one abstention.
Um, I move that the consent items, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. That, uh, oh, yes, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
That concludes our regular board meeting. We do have a closed session, so I'll read that motion. Special board meeting closed session has been scheduled for Monday, September twenty-second, immediately following the adjournment of the regular board meeting at the Green Bay Area Public Schools District Office Building. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight, flag one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight by one F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except for paragraph D applies, which is discussed in prior, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, to wet personnel matters. Meeting will begin in open session, considering the appropriate motion for a closed session, so provided by law.
So moved.
Second.
Sandy?
Blacka?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. We will move across the hall, room three thirty-seven. We will move across the hall to 337.